There could be a contract, you know what I mean? What is that? How are we gonna do it? I got a natural one, I guess I'll try to. Right. Good. Yeah. I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure. Um, alright. So, yeah. I think that's what tells me it's convenient. Legislature should be in all states. Now, it's tricky. It's fucking bright. No, it did, it's bright enough.
I forget.
Then we're starting to apply that.
I mean, if he could do, you know.
He doesn't take it.
You do have a case.
I think it's talking. I don't beat them. No. No, he is very.
Yeah, I know.
It's very quiet. Look. Hey.
He kind of catch on.
A bit, but he. What the T Z D meeting guy was at. And they asked him. Much of questions.
I understand.
No.
I'll see how this, I don't know. I'm curious.
Not a water. Massive disorder, what does anybody have? Maybe there's.
How long is it gonna go? Which information is gonna be?
Wait, it's kept it. Weird at night. It doesn't sound. People dig up shit. I don't know.
We were really.
I could see it in your cereals, potentially. Except. They look at it. On the theory. Oh, okay. No, that is. No, I know. I don't know where, where I have, I feel like a certain. Can you? There's. Fusion. Oh, it's a villain over there. It's a villain over there.
It's a little different agenda. New format, same yard.
Well, it's a half and half deal. A half and half cream or something?
You'll have to. Do set, but it's okay.
It's no one improved, huh?
Moon improved, yep. I like that part.
Is the speaking at the front of the end?
At the front, yeah.
Alright, it is six o'clock, we'll call the Sartell City Council Meeting to Order for October twenty eighth. Please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council, before you, is the, uh, new agenda template. Uh, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
No, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. Approval of, uh, minutes from October fourteenth, regular and special council. I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes carry. We have special presentation next from the St. Cloud APO.
Thank you very much, uh, City of Sartell, council members and community. Um, my name is Vicki Johnson, I am the Senior Transportation Planner with the St. Cloud Area Planning Organization. Also brought here, my executive director, Brian Gibson. And we're gonna be talking about our Looking Ahead 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So just a little background about what the St. Cloud area, or area planning organization or APO is, is we are a federally recognized organization for areas with populations of over fifty thousand. Uh, we are one of probably about four hundred across the country that are charged with carrying out metropolitan transportation planning through a continuing comprehensive and cooperative means with our member agencies. As you can see on the slides here, our member agencies do include the City of Sartell, along with the cities of St. Cloud, St. Joseph, Stock Rapids, Wade Park, and portions of Stearns, Benton, Sherburne Counties. Leesock Township is also a dues-paying member, and St. Cloud Metrobus is also represented here as well. And this is just a general map of where our urban area, urban and metropolitan planning area is covers. As you kind of notice, we do cover the core cities, and then we also incorporate some of the, um, townships as well. Um, like Brockway Township, Minden Township, Haven Township, and things like that into our, um, transportation planning area. So what do we do? Um, our organization is charged with developing a regional long-range multimodal surface transportation plan. And then the other aspect of that is we also are in charge of overseeing the expenditure of federal transportation dollars. So when, anytime that there is a, um, federal transportation dollars being spent within our planning area, those dollars are then, um, funneled through our St. Cloud Area Planning Organization's Policy Board. So for example, here in the City of Sartell, there have been some federal grants such as our carbon reduction program for the E V police vehicles, or the paper mill trail that has gone through our APO's Policy Board. Also various road improvements such as Nineteenth, uh, Avenue South. And then we've also done, um, some various bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure improvements here that have received federal grant money through the APO. So today, we're here to talk about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, or otherwise known as our M T P. And this document really outlines a shared community-based vision for how the surface transportation network should function. So we also detail in this plan, um, these necessary steps that our partner organizations on the city, county, state, and our federal level can take to ensure this vision here becomes a reality. So our M T P is a really long and encompassing document, um, so I'm here just kind of boil down for you. Um, it doesn't, does include ten different chapters that really detail, provide that comprehensive existing conditions overview. We also look at our regional vision for where we want to go, um, by twenty fifty. We talk about travel demand modeling, if we can actually afford to do some of these projects. We talk about those projects and then ideas for future planning studies. We also incorporate several technical appendices, and then we, um, have our robust, robust public engagement process also documented in our lo- long-range plan. So really, our M T P really answers and provide, or addresses and provides answers for three questions. Where are we now? Where do we want our future to be in terms of transportation? And how do we plan to get there? So where are we now is really addressed in our first two chapters, which are existing conditions and our environmental conditions. And these really provide a comprehensive overview of our tra- of our region. And for those of you that may or may not know, I am a journalist by trade, so I like to look at things, yes, I see some of you guys here that I know, that I've interviewed, uh, at one point or another. So we like to talk about things and who, what, where, when, why, and how. And so that's really how this, um, existing conditions and environmental conditions section is really structured. So we can kind of dive a little bit into this, so the who, who lives in our region? So we, um, this is one of the infographics that you'll find in our plan in chapter two, just kind of provides a general overview of who lives in our region. And that's really important for us to understand, um, in terms of how many people are living here, how many households, and what, how is our region really diverse? And one of the cool things that we learned doing this process is our region is rapidly diversifying. Um, ten years ago, when we did, looking at the twenty ten census, for example, we had about one in ten individuals identifying as a person of color. By twenty twenty, that number had jumped almost one in four. So we're seeing a, a huge, um, growth in our black indigenous and people of color population. We also look at our low-income households, limited English proficiency, looking at where populations, um, live that have, with people that have disabilities. We also look at youth populations, we look at if you're living in a, a single-family dwelling or a multifamily dwelling, and a bunch of different, um, sorts of characteristics, educational attainment and such, to really understand what our population is. This next graph here, this next map here is from the U S Census Bureau, and this is really, um, show, showing, um, who works and who lives in our region and who works in our region. And so one of the things that is really interesting to understand, and from a transportation perspective, is who, like, where are the jobs? And then who's staying here and working here, and who's coming into our region, and who's leaving our region to go elsewhere? So looking at this map here on the pa- on your screen here, you can see that about thirty-seven thousand individuals are coming into our planning area to work every day. We have about forty-four thousand individuals that are living here and working here, but we also noticed that there's about twenty, just under twenty-three thousand individuals that live here, but are going somewhere else to work. And so that, and that somewhere else is primarily the Twin Cities, but that could also be, um, Western Stearns County, Eastern Benton County, and so on. So it's really important to understand that from a commuter's perspective, also from an economic development perspective as well, understanding that we've got a lot of people that are coming here to work, but we also see some people leaving. So where are they going, and how can we keep those jobs in our region? We can't have a transportation plan without talking about transportation, so our roads and bridges and things like that. So our plan really focuses heavily on our roadway network. In, on this map here, you'll see all of the multicolor different roads. Um, those are considered our functionally classified roads, so the, those are the roads that are eligible for federal funding. So you'll see, um, a lot of, we don't really deal with those local streets, those neighborhood, um, specific roadways, but we deal with the roadways that have, that generate a lot of traffic. So thinking about like I ninety-four, Cassau seventy-five, Pine Cone Road for ex- example as well. So we talk about pavement quality, we talk about, uh, safety, we talk about how much traffic is going on these roads. We also talk about system delay, so how much congestion are we seeing on our roadways as well? Um, in addition to, um, roadways, we also talk about transit. So surface transportation, our dollars also, um, go towards our, uh, urban transit provider, Metrobus. So we do want to have an understanding of how their service area works, looking at both their fixed route and their dial-a-ride service, um, looking at passengers per hour, their route changes, and things like that. And then the other tor- sort of transportation that we do cover is our bicycle pedestrian network. Here's a picture of the, um, uh, traffic counter, or a, a trail counter here, uh, on Pine Cone Road. I believe this is our northern connection. Um, we do two counts on Pine Cone Road, but really understanding system usage and where some of those gaps are. We do have a pavement condition, um, index as well for sa- shared use path, but really understanding that, um, not everybody wants to or can get around using a car. So making sure that we're understanding those multiple, those different modes, and ensuring that all people have access to get to their desired destinations is important as well. Perfect, so. There we go. And in addition, kind of, like, we do talk about a bunch of other different transportation options, but those three are the primary ones that we do have, um, that our dollars do, um, tend to fund. Then this next picture here, if you guys remember the wildfires back in twenty twenty-three, where we had a ton of air pollution and things like that going on in our region, um, and across the state. While we also, um, in addition to providing just a comprehensive overview of what our system looks like, we also do a comprehensive deep dive into what our environmental conditions are. As most of you probably know, our transportation sector is a huge emitter of greenhouse gas emissions. Um, in the state of Minnesota, according to a twenty twenty-three legislative report, transportation was the number-one cause of greenhouse gas emissions in the state of Minnesota. So understanding the effects that transportation does have on our air quality is really, really important. And equally as important is understanding some of the relationships that our transportation network has to our water quality and to just our environment in general. As we know, um, as our climate continues to change and evolve, we're seeing hotter temperatures, we're seeing, um, more intense rainfall, and that all has an impact on our pavement quality, has an impact on our stormwater capacity and things like that. So understanding the relationship between transportation and the environment is also documented in our long-range plan. So that kind of answers the question of where we are right now, so now we are turning to where we want to be, where do we want our future to be? Our plan has to span a planning horizon of a minimum of twenty years, our plan goes out to twenty fifty, so that's twenty-five years. So we went and we asked the community, what do they feel was working really well in terms of our regional transportation network? And what, where we could, um, look to improve as we continue going forward? So we did a pretty heavily, um, extensive, uh, public engagement process from fall twenty twenty, and we concluded that in early spring twenty twenty-three. We got probably about two thousand comments through a variety of different means. I typed down all the comments, cut them all out, reviewed them all, sorted them in categories in my living room, and was able to come up with six different visioning themes. So these themes are what our community members have told us is important for us to consider as we look toward the future in terms of transportation planning. So, uh, the first theme here, system and environmental stewardship. If I had a dollar for every time I heard fix the potholes, I would be a millionaire, because that was one of our number-one comments, is fix the existing infrastructure that we have. The other thing is also making sure that we're taking care of, of our environment. Um, a lot of people had a lot of concerns with looking at paving over paradise, or making sure that our air quality is good and things like that. So making sure that we're being responsible with the assets that we have. Looking at multimodal connections, so making sure that people have, um, access to where they want to go, how they want to go. Like I said earlier, not everybody wants to drive a car or can drive a car. Think of your kids, or, or, or people with disabilities, or, or people that are older and that maybe just don't have that option. So we want to make sure we're preserving the, the, the network for everybody involved here. Um, so that's where the multimodal connections looks at, walking, biking, rolling, transit, things like that. Congestion management, again, if I didn't make a million dollars off of hearing potholes, I would make a million doll- dollars off of hearing what is up with the traffic lights. So congestion management is really looking at how we can think creatively to minimize those unnecessary travel delays. And one of the things that we heard is, um, you know, should we just build more lanes? Should we do adaptive signal timing, things like that? So really looking and vetting some of these things, um, to really reduce some of that congestion that, um, our residents are feeling here on our network.
I heard roundabouts work really well.
Roundabout, roundabouts work very well in terms of transportation safety, which is our next theme, because they reduce fatalities and serious injuries. Um, one of the things that we wanted to, um, is make sure that everybody gets home safely. Um, I'm the business manager for the Stearns, Benton, Towards Zero Deaths, uh, Safe Roads Coalition here for both Stearns and Benton County. Uh, we just had a T Z D conference here, um, statewide conference in St. Cloud, really focusing in on how can we, um, look at engineering fixes to making sure our roadways are safe for all users? Not just, not just cars, but looking at the whole network as a whole. We also look at interregional connections, we understand that, um, transportation doesn't end in a municipal or county boundary, that people want to go where they want to go, and goods need to go where they want to go. It need to go. So we're looking at how we can make sure that our region stays economically vibrant, looking at connections to other destinations in the state, such as the Twin Cities or the Brainerd Lakes area, looking at, um, national and global centers of commerce. And then finally, technological advances, advancements. We know that our technology is changing here in our region, um, in terms of transportation. We're seeing a lot of electric vehicles or E V charging stations, there's talk of connected and automated vehicles. We're already seeing some of that technology here in our region and in our, in our day-to-day lives. So how can we, as a region, ensure that we are making strides so that we continue to be competitive and ahead of some of these technological advancements that are happening in our, in our transportation industry? So that's our vision for the future, so one of the ways that we can get there is through infrastructure projects. Can't have a transportation plan without talking about infrastructure. So how do we know which locations across our metro to invest in? I am not a transportation modeler, I will talk very briefly about transportation modeling. If you want a modeling expert, Brian is my, like, default in the room, even though he is not a modeler, he knows way more about modeling than I do. So, one of the things that we need to do first is we need to, basically, we put everything, a, a bunch of data into what's called a travel demand model. And this travel demand model, um, is really nice, because it is able to kind of forecast how people are going, or, gonna replicate how people use the system now. And if we can get accurate results that way, then we can kind of monkey with some of the data and see what would happen if. So the first thing we need to do is figure out where we are. So we use a lot of that socioeconomic data such as, um, population. We look at where, um, the community has various, um, industries such as commercial, retail, housing, um, and things like that. And basically, I like to say our model looks at, um, where people live and the destinations they need to go to, and then it connects it. And that connection is oftentimes on a roadway, um, that's already here. So as you can kind of see here, once we kind of figured out, we validated our model to co- to replicate travel counts that we had back in twenty twenty, this is what we look at now. So now we ask, okay, we can replicate our, our existing results here, what happens if we add to it? So our twenty fifty, um, forecasts are added to this model. So what happens if we do absolutely nothing to our system, but based off of input that we receive from staff from the City of Sartell, as well as staff from all across the region? Um, where do they think population growth is gonna happen? Where do they think it's actually going to be? Where are our jobs gonna be? Where is our development pressure going to happen in terms of housing or, um, commercial retail and things like that? So we're able to go ahead and figure out, you know, based off of that, where you guys think it's going to happen? And then we throw it back into our model and say, okay, we're not gonna do anything to our system, what's that gonna look like? And so that is our twenty fifty no-build model. So one of the things that's kind of interesting here is, um, you're just gonna start seeing more yellow. So green means good, that means things are flowing pretty good. Yellow means eh, it's the problem area, red is bad, red means that you're basically at a parking lot. So we can kind of basically see here that our twenty fifty no-bu- build model shows that we're gonna have some issues. Um, there's a little stretch on Pine Cone Road that was kind of in that yellow area, but now you're starting to see more of that yellow here in Sartell. Um, looking at, you know, U S ten coming through here, Cassau twenty-nine on the Benton County side, um, Cassau one, the River Road, um, leading him into the community as well. So then we ask, okay, so we know that there's gonna be issues, now what do we want to do with it? So, working with the cities and counties, we ask them to kind of play around with it. What's, what are your regional priorities? Where are you wanting to see, um, potential growth and stuff like that? Where are your roads that you've identified as far as your comprehensive plans? And how can we go ahead and look at, you know, if we do all of these different things, and we can afford to do them, that's a key point, what's our system gonna look like? And this is gonna be our twenty fifty build model results. So the dotted lines are new alignments, um, so you'll see like Fifteenth Street North is up there, um, that new alignment there. But the numbers that are just the numbers listed are adding more lanes. So you can kind of see, even if we do spend additional funds, there, there's still gonna be some sort of congestion issues in certain corridors as well. Um, so to me, what that tells me is we can't build our way out of congestion. It helps, but we also need to look at other modes too. Um, but in this, this kind of model scenario, we look at how building some additional roadway capacity and adding some more lanes or new alignments is gonna affect how people, um, travel in our region. Um, and again, all of the projects that we model here and the projects that were in the attachments that you guys have received are all projects that are considered fiscally constrained, which means that they're, they're not a wish list of, of projects that you just hope a billion dollars is gonna fall from the sky. These are projects that we worked with our, with your guys as finance directors to understand how much you've spent on transportation so far, and if we keep that trend, this is about how much money we can spend on maintaining our system as well as doing capacity expansion. And then just for funsies, because this is a regional priority, we do talk about the Belt Line. So the Belt Line, um, is a concept that is going to be going, that's gonna circle the entirety of the St. Cloud Metro. Um, we do a modeling scenario, looking here at the Belt Line impact if we build all of the capacity expansion projects. And the Belt Line is the only component of our plan that is not fiscally constrained. Um, so it technically, if it's in the plan, if it's fiscally constrained, it's eligible for federal funding. If federal funding were to come for the Belt Line, we'd have to amend our plan, but we do a modeling scenario here for our Belt Line as well. And then other components, we to- do talk about those technological changes to transportation, such as electric vehicles and connected automated tech- vehicle technology. And then we also kind of conclude our plan, looking at some various planning studies and initiatives APO staff can take over the next five years, um, to help us further our progress toward our twenty fifty goals. So, um, Q R code here is, um, brings you to the M T P page on our website, where you'll find all of our chapters, our appendices, we've got some video, YouTube videos, we've got Alex made, uh, a story map. Alex McKenzie is our associate planner, he did an awesome job, it's, excuse me, with the story map. My contact information, Brian's contact information is here, you can find us on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's my presentation.
Outstanding. Council, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council, next on our agenda is open forum, public comment. Uh, I know we had one registered, I saw they've left the meeting. Um, so we'll go to community linkage. We have two public hearings tonight under community linkage, first one is for Niron Magnetics. Uh, council, before we open that, there is no motion or action necessary, it's, uh, simply to gain feedback from the community. I'll turn it over to Anna.
Awesome, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, tonight you'll be hearing public input, uh, from the community specifically regarding the purchase agreement approved on September thirtieth for the sale of seventy-nine acres on Fourth Avenue South to Niron Magnetics for the construction of their production facility. Again, Mayor Fitzsim, um, already mentioned, and I'll just echo it, that there is no approval necessary tonight, it is purely for public input, um, and specifically designed as public input to, for us to gather, um, and understand as we continue to develop agreements as a part of the sale process. So you will have future public hearings on this item, specifically for the subsidy agreement that would be coming forward, and then the actual, um, sale of the property and for closing documents related to the sale of the property. So there will be future public hearings, those are not being reviewed tonight. Uh, we won't necessarily have specific answers for any of the public input that you might hear, um, but tonight is for us to just understand some of the, um, items that the public might be interested in us having mitigate as a part of those agreements. So just want to set the stage for that right out of the gate. You will have future public hearings, we're just at the beginning of our due diligence phase, and we wanted to make sure to provide multiple opportunities for the public to be heard through this process. Uh, the due diligence period is intended to be for one hundred and eighty days from September thirtieth, so we're at the very beginning of that. Um, and another, we did have a listening session prior, uh, to the meeting tonight from four-thirty to five-thirty, uh, with some attendance, we'll have an additional one November eighteenth from nine-thirty to ten-thirty A M at the Sartell Community Center. So that one will be during the day, morning, and over at our community center for anybody interested in attending that format as well. So if folks don't want to speak to the council at a public hearing format, there'll be other formats for you to give input. Um, and of course, we also welcome input, uh, via email, uh, via our project site as well. Testimony is in your packets for those that couldn't be in attendance tonight, so you'll notice a couple of testimony letters in your packets, and then I also put one at your dais that just came in this evening too. So you do have additional testimony within your council packets, but otherwise, uh, we'd be prepared to open it up for any additional testimony and public input this evening. Any questions before we do that?
Council, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify, please step to the podium, state your name, uh, address, and any, uh, affiliation to an organization that you're representing tonight.
Good evening, my name's Joan Schatz, and I live at thirty-eight, thirty-seven Majestic Pond Drive in Sartell. And I am here this evening representing the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation, I'm the board chair for the G S D C. And I've been a part of the Niron Magnetics project, and I want to speak on behalf of the, the possibility and the promise of this project. So the pro- proposed development will, uh, productively employ currently unused land within our city, transforming it into a, a hub of industry and innovation. This transformation is not just about land use, it's about creating the future for our community and the prosperity that can come with that. One of the most important aspects of this project is its potential to create a hundred and seventy-five high-paying jobs in our area in just phase one, with the possibility of adding even more in the future. These jobs will provide our residents with excellent opportunities for employment and career advancement, improving the quality of life for many families in our area. It is estimated that Niron's presence will generate. It is estimated that Niron's presence will generate tens of millions of dollars in economic benefit in Sartell as well as the Greater St. Cloud region. This includes wages earned by employees and goods and services purchased locally, thereby boosting our local economy and supporting local businesses. Moreover, this project will broaden our local tax base, providing essential revenues that can be reinvested into our community. This financial influx will help us improve public services, infrastructure, and educational programs, ensuring a brighter future for all of our residents. Additionally, the exciting new technology that Niron will bring to our city enhances our national security and benefits ma- American manufacturers. And I can speak to the manufacturing benefits from personal experience. Besides chairing the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation Board and being a Sartell resident, I am also the CEO of a local manufacturing company, Park Industries. At Park, we build capital equipment that utilizes motors, and motors require magnets, which require rare earth metals, the vast majority of which are produced in locations like China and the Congo. A few years ago, China restricted the production of rare earth metals. This restriction made it extremely difficult to get motors, disrupting production for many American manufacturing and manufacturers, including Park Industries. Technology like Niron's provides a feasible alternative to magnet, to magnets that are currently available today. Finally, and most exciting to me, is that Niron achieves these manufacturing and national security benefits while protecting the environment from the devastating effects of mining for rare earth metals, which would showcase our city's commitment to sustainable practices. The Niron Magnetics Project will literally put Sartell and our region on the green tech map nationally. They have received tremendous interest from Department of Defense, Stellantis, GMC, and other huge investors to move this technology forward as quickly as possible. In conclusion, I want to wholeheartedly support the Niron Magnetics Project and urge all of you as members of our Sartell City Council to approve the proposal. It's an opportunity to propel our city forward economically, technologically, and sustainably. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Council members, my name is Claire Richards. I live at five thirty Riverside Drive Northeast in St. Cloud. I am a resident of Greater St. Cloud. I also serve on the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation Board as well as several other regional nonprofits. I own a business called Impacts, which is a startup based in this region as well. First, thank you for this opportunity to speak on the proposal to bring Niron Magnetics to our region. I'm here in support of Niron's new manufacturing facility, a project that I believe would create substantial positive impacts on our local economy and solidify Sartell as a forward-thinking, growth-centered city. From an economic standpoint, there are data points that support how high-growth startups like Niron are known for creating up to fifty percent of new job creation across the regions in which they settle. Their presence often stimulates further job opportunities in related sectors, encouraging ancillary businesses that support the growth. Specifically, I'm referencing a study done in twenty sixteen by the Kaufman Foundation. A twenty twenty study conducted by the Federal Reserve Bank of Richmond also supports these findings. Their data suggests that high-growth firms significantly bolster local economies by broadening regional job opportunities, fostering cross-industry expansion, and creating a ripple impact that lifts various service sectors. Such companies not only grow themselves, but also catalyze growth across their supply chains, ultimately strengthening our industrial base and ensuring that Sartell becomes a hub for advanced, sustainable manufacturing. In particular, the regions that invest in and support high-growth startups tend to see economic resilience and community wealth as the influx of new jobs raises wages and boosts local spending. Now, I'm sure others here can speak even more so to the economic impact. And I know you've likely already been inundated with some of this data, but I'd like to speak from my own personal experience. My husband and I started a business in twenty twenty that would be categorized as a high-growth startup. High-growth startups have the ability to grow at an exponential rate, serve regions that extend far beyond our local community, and they have the ability to attract venture capital. The ability to tr- attract venture capital, and this is typically money that is from beyond our region and often even beyond our state, is unique to high-growth startups. This outside money is often leveraged to pay for local talent and partners. We want outside money to flow into our communities and and contribute to our thriving community. Unfortunately, our particular region has not seen our fair share of venture capital in the last decade. Since twenty fourteen, only fourteen businesses in the Greater St. Cloud community have been invested in by venture capital. Compare that to the Twin Cities, where one thousand four hundred and fifty companies in that same timeframe received venture funding. Fargo Morehead had fifty companies, Rochester had fifty, Duluth had twenty-two. Our sister communities have a distinct innovation advantage over our region. Attracting companies like Niron helps to magnify Sartell, indicating a commitment to innovation. This creates a more vibrant startup ecosystem that causes a positive ripple impact across the region. It's not just about this one startup, this one company, but it fosters an environment where more startup action can happen. The reality is this, if you want your main street businesses to thrive, your coffee shops, banks, chiropractors, restaurants, there needs to be a strong and growing customer base. You need companies like Niron to take root and create that customer base. They not only shop at local stores, but they donate to local nonprofits, and they support local causes. Niron has made national news for good reason. They are innovative and uniquely American. I'm excited to see what a company like Niron will do to not only grow Sartell, but our entire region. I urge you to think about this positively, as I think it will have a very, very extensive impact on our community over the course of generations. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, members of the council. I am not going to follow Claire at all. That was amazing, Claire, and thank you for that. But that's just a testimony of somebody who's passionate about our region, right? And there's hundreds and hundreds of people that don't have a voice here tonight to say that. I stand in front of you as a developer, looking to bring two new projects forward to Sartell, to the city. I'm excited with the hope of what Niron brings, but I commend the city, city staff, everybody who has had the forward thought of bringing them forward, because this is our time. This is your time to set a new bar in the state of Minnesota and regionally and across the nation. And I just want to think about the fact that, you know, as we look at developing raw land and making new things, we need that innovation. We need those things to happen to foster those other businesses. Businesses that don't even know that they're going to be a business in a couple of years. Our job as developers is to bring the land forward, to work with city and staff to make sure that those are available. But it's your leadership, the city's ability to bring something like this forward, the GSDC and everybody who collaborated on it. I just urge everybody to think forward, to think about the future, and what this does to the city of Sartell. We will not know. We will not sit underneath the shade for the trees that we plant the seeds of today. But you can all be rest assured, there will be shade, and there will be some large trees planted. So, thank you. I fully hope that you support this initiative.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to testify tonight? Seeing no movement in the crowd, second call. Anyone wishing to testify on the Niron Magnetics? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, counsel, as noted prior, that was just informative, uh, taking the feedback as we progress forward. Our second public hearing tonight is on the vacation and land swap of First Street North. Uh, this is, counsel, this is part of the West Side Street Reconstruct. Uh, but tonight's public hearing is really specific to the vacation of the easement and land swap transaction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is approval for the vacation of a portion of First Street North, and then also the execution of some land swap documents as well. As indicated, this is part of the West Side Reconstruction Project that is scheduled to occur in twenty twenty-five. Under Old Business, this evening is also the plan approval and authorization to bid. That is part of Old Business and not part of this, but I just did want to point that out, that it is an item um on the meeting tonight. So when we started this project and began looking at the entire area, we noticed there is an identified area of First Street North that is necessary to acquire to ensure that the project can be completed in a feasible manner for the city as well as the current property owners. That you can see here, the area we're discussing is primarily that small triangular piece um that's in white there. Um, part of this discovery, we determined there's excess right-of-way surrounding the property. Um, that small triangle piece of property is actually owned by an adjacent property owner to the left. So it is not part of our um right-of-way that we have currently, um, but I'll get into that in a second here. So with looking at this, we determined that there is excess right-of-way that we can ultimately transfer if we acquire that triangular piece of property, that we can transfer back to the property owner to the left um and make a cohesive land piece for them. It also is beneficial to the city in terms of long-term maintenance for snowplow routes, um, public safety access um as well will be improved and just a cohesive development there. We did um engage the surrounding property owners with a few options um because ultimately it was up to the current property owner to um enter into this agreement with this land swap to be able to actually vacate some of this right-of-way that we have. Um, so we presented some options um in front of them. One was proceed as what we have right now with current right-of-way, which would not change what they have. Two was a alternate, and then three is what we're bringing forward. So Rob, if you go to the last slide, actually, is um the, one of the options that was presented to them. Um, creating this cul-de-sac there. Thank you. Um, so, like I said before, it was ultimately up to the current property owner of that small triangular piece to give the, give that property to the city, us then vacating um unnecessary right-of-way and then swapping that property that's unnecessary for the city back to that property owner. They had to agree to that, but it was heavily weighed with the surrounding property owners, um, what that would create for their small neighborhood there. Um, they also took into account um what's currently um on their lot with large trees. There's a lot of large trees in that area. Um, and this was beneficial in terms of that, um, because it did preserve some of the trees that they didn't um want to have us remove and as well as there was some trees that we would be looking at removing that they wanted as well. So this is beneficial for both parties and the overall um project and the development in this neighborhood going forward. It increases our additional square footage when, once we swap that land with the current property owner as well. So looking at this, what is up for approval tonight is open the public hearing um first, and then a motion second to approve the vacation request that coincides with the land swap document. So we'll be swap, they'll be giving us the property of the triangular piece, record that, then we'll record the vacation area, and then we'll deed back that to the property owner to have that combined with their lot. Um, creating this cul-de-sac in the end. I'll take questions after the public hearing.
Counsel will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the vacation and land swap of First Street North, please step to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Second call, anyone wishing to testify? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the vacation and land swap of First Street North? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, what questions do we have? If any? Seeing no questions, um, as Carrie mentioned, we would be looking for two different motions. Uh, first one is the vacation. I take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the vacation. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next one is on the uh land swap transaction. We'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the land swap.
The motion to approve the land swap, is there a second?
A second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries as well. Counsel, on to consent agenda. Uh, we have items listed under B, C, and two under D. Would take those as a slate, or is there a desire to pull one of them?
I'll make the motion to approve items A through D.
Motion to approve all items on consent. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries as well. Anna, on our agenda, we have monitoring reports under six. Uh, notice they weren't in the packet, though.
Yes, because you will not, uh, you'll notice on there that the, the first date that you'll actually review monitoring report isn't until December ninth. So that's just the next actual due date, but wanted to call out that that will be your first monitoring report will be that December ninth date. Um, so, nothing to actually review and approve tonight. Uh, you'll review some at the work, that, that one at the next workshop, and then it'll go on the regular council meeting agenda for the Dec- December ninth meeting. So no motion necessary tonight, just more informative.
Perfect. Counsel, under action items tonight, we have the West Side Reconstruct pron- uh, project, final plan, approval, and authorization to bid.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, before you tonight, we have the West Side Reconstruction Project Final Plan Approval and Authorization to Bid. Um, as a reminder, this was presented as a feasibility study back in February, and then we had the preliminary assessment hearing. So some of this is probably familiar, but we're going to get into the, the final design details tonight. Um, just a quick overview, looking at the project location. So on the, the screen, you can see the areas in red. Those are proposed as a full reconstruct area, meaning street, curb, um, storm, sanitary, and water improvements in those areas. The areas in blue are partial reconstruct, so some of the utilities and curb will remain in place. Uh, but there are some older utilities there that needed replacing, and so that's why they're partial reconstructs. And then the areas in green are proposed mill and overlays with the project. Also of note, you can see in the um kind of black hatching there, the project is adjacent to the twenty nineteen Safe Routes to School and twenty twenty-two County Road One project, so um we'll be tying into some of those with this project. There are four proposed right of, or roadway widths with this project. You can see in the upper left there, the thirty-six-foot-wide road is the city's standard width. Um, so we started there with the feasibility and then um reviewed traffic. We reviewed comments from staff, um, residents, and then took your input at the feasibility presentation and, and came up with these four different widths, and I'll, I'll show which streets um the different widths apply to as we get into the next slide. But just wanted to point out, there's a couple of different widths just based on not needing that thirty-six feet um on all of these local streets. One other thing I wanted to point out, I can see it's a little bit harder. One other thing I wanted to point out, I can see it's a little bit hard to see in there, but on the bottom, there's two different um, roadway sections. And so there are a couple of streets within this project that we're recommending geotextile fabric and a little more increased roadway section just due to poor soils and clays within those roads. So as I mentioned, there are four different roadway widths within the project. You can see the thirty-six foot wide road is shown in red. Um, so Second Street, Third Avenue and then Second Avenue. Thirty-four foot road width along First Avenue, um, then a lot of the project is that thirty-two foot road width you can see shown in blue. And then Sartell Street at a twenty-four foot width. There are two different uh, geom- geometric areas that I wanted to just highlight within the project. Um, one of them was just discussed with that First Street North and Terry Lane. So as you can see in that top left picture, that's the existing um, pavement section where it has the loop through there. And then as Carrie mentioned, um, the plan with that land swap is to install a cul-de-sac through that area. So wanted to point that out. Carrie did a good job um, showing that though, so I won't go into detail on that one. The other area I wanted to specifically call out is the Second Street North and Third Avenue intersection. Uh, so this is just north of the Saint Francis School. You can see actually the top uh, right land there is the school district building. Um, so really kind of a poor awkward intersection right now. You can see there's a pedestrian crossing that cuts diagonally across both roadways. Um, there's the island in the middle that's not used for the pedestrians and so we're looking at reconfiguring that intersection to the T intersection. You can see at the bottom where Second Street North would be the through street. Um, Third Avenue is a stop condition and it greatly improves the safety for both pedestrians and vehicles in that area.
Do we have any historic context as to why that was built that way?
No, that one was, there is, well, um, nineteen eighties, I think, is when the records show that one. I don't have any context on why it was that way though. Um, I do know there is water main like pressure system vaults in that area previously. They're really close to that, so it might have been related to that. But I have no previous. There are three alleys um, within the project scope. So the number one and two on the map there between um, Riverside and Second Avenue. Both of those alleys have sanitary sewer beneath them. That's proposed to be reconstructed. Uh, along with that, we're planning on paving the alleys and putting curb on one side. Um, that's a surmountable curb, so residents will be able to drive over it wherever the curb is. Um, also within the alleys is catch basins and, excuse me, concrete storm sewer. Um, so one thing we found getting into final design and, and just speaking with residents and staff is drainage is really, really poor within these alleys. And so um, the ability to come in and pave them, put curb and gutter and then some storm sewer is gonna hopefully greatly improve that the drainage issues that they have in these areas. Um, the other alley there, there's no utilities on number three, um, but that'll have the same section where it has pavement and curb and gutter on one side. Uh, as mentioned previously, there are a couple of roadways within the project area that we're proposing as mill and overlay. Um, so those are First Avenue North, there's a segment to Third Avenue North, Fourth Street North and Fourth Avenue South. Looking specifically at pedestrian improvements, um, there's a couple of sidewalk gaps that you can see in red there that we're proposing new sidewalk. So specifically just north of Saint Francis along the parking lot. Um, there's a strip of sidewalk there and then just west of the school district building, um, completing that gap on Third Avenue. There's a new trail being proposed along Sartell Street and Fourth Avenue. And then reconstruction of sidewalks and trails within the project. Um, they'll be put back where they are, just reconstructing them where we're impacting. So you can see reconstructed trail along the football field that um, River View on Second, uh, same thing on Third Avenue and then on Fourth Street, reconstructing that trail. Reconstructing the sidewalk primarily on Second Street and then a little bit on Third Avenue by the district building. Just wanted to highlight a little bit more detail on the Sartell Street, um, proposed trail. So we are proposing a ten-foot bituminous trail. That would make the connection from the Second Street system up to County Road One and the pedestrian bridge that was installed with the two thousand twenty-two um, Riverside Improvement Project. So you can see this is adjacent to Watab Park there. Um, the yellow dots indicate proposed lighting along this trail, same style lights that you'll see when you go along the County Road One trail. With the project, we are proposing just over two and a half miles of concrete storm sewer. Um, with that is a hundred and seventy-two proposed storm sewer struc- structures. And there are multiple treatment um, designs taking place in this project. A lot of the area currently does not have treatment. So there are two proposed treatment structures along First Street North and Terry Lane. You can see those in blue, um, in the upper left image there. There's one proposed pond to treat runoff from Sartell Street shown in green. That's in Watab Park and I'll highlight that in just a second. And then there are six systems um, that were installed with the County Road One project that we're gonna be connecting to. So you can see kind of the whole project main area um, along the river there. We don't need to install any new treatment systems because those were all accounted for. Uh, with the County Road One projects, we're able to tie into that and that um, drainage is able to get into those systems and be treated there. As mentioned, there is a proposed stormwater pond within Watab Park. Uh, so you can see that highlighted here where the, the park shelter, this is kind of that south parking lot in the park. Um, we did look at the pond location and shape with the Parks Department and kind of discussed what the per- excuse me, preferred location is and how they wanted that to look throughout there. Um, so this is the proposed design coming down the hill from Sartell Street, um, going into the pond and then discharging into the Watab River. With the project, there is approximately one point eight miles of proposed water main. This is a combination of eight, twelve and sixteen inch ductile iron pipe. Um, thirty proposed hydrants and this water would serve a hundred and sixty residential properties and six commercial properties. Sanitary sewer improvements, just under two and a half miles proposed sanitary sewer main. Uh, this would be PVC pipe ranging anywhere from eight to eighteen inches. Along with that is fifty-two proposed sanitary structures. There are a couple of structures on the west side of Terry Lane that we're proposing an internal coating on three of those structures. That's primarily due to corrosion issues that was noted by staff and so that'll hopefully um, help prevent that and make those structures last a lot longer. And then this sanitary serves a hundred and ninety-nine residential properties and six commercial properties. There was extensive external stakeholder coordination um, throughout the whole project design. So there was some that we highlighted previously with the feasibility study and at the preliminary assessment hearing. Um, but just focusing on the final design and that stakeholder coordination that's taken place over the past couple of months. We've had many ongoing meetings with businesses, schools and private utility companies. Um, a lot of direct communication, you know, emails, phone calls, we met on site with many of them. Um, similarly with the residents, we've had um, numerous meetings on site, sent out letters for specific portions of the project. We had um, questions on concerns from residents and got a lot of valuable input from them throughout that process. I wanted to highlight just two specific um, external stakeholders that are along the project that we recently met with and just um, just point out the conversations that we've had with them. So the first one being the school district, you can see River View and the district um, building being there, their school definitely has some properties that are going to be impacted by the project and the schedule. So we were able to meet with them and talk through where the roads are being reconstructed adjacent to their properties. Um, take in consideration some of the phasing and scheduling and, you know, they mentioned some of the drop offs on Fifth Street. And we're able to incorporate that into the project the best we can and make sure that um, communication is clear between us. Also, you can see on the bottom there Sixth Street North, uh, they have a irrigation easement across Sixth Street to be able to pull from the river and irrigate um, at River View. And so with the project, the school plans to replace that irrigation line, so it's shown on the bottom. The other external stakeholder that I wanted to highlight, uh, we met with the Zurich recently. They will have some impacts with this project both in the north and south sides. You can see in that top image there is sanitary storm and water um, that extends throughout their north parking lot, just kind of the north sliver of their north parking lot. Uh, we did stub into this partially with County Road Ones. We'll continue that on and replace those um, up to where we were installing with County Road One. Similar on the south side of their parking lot, there's utility easements through there and we'll be replacing water, sanitary and storm. And so we're in communication with them in regards to construction phasing and, and how to best work around um, their schedule and make sure that communication is clear between us as construction advances. Looking at the total project costs, um, the feasibility report, survey, geotech and televising, just over two hundred and fifteen thousand. The final design permits and legal, just over five hundred and seventy-three thousand. The estimated construction services and testing is approximately three point, or excuse me, one point three nine million. And the estimated construction cost is just over three point eight, excuse me, thirteen point eight. I just wanted to compare that to what you've seen previously on this project. So you can see on the bottom there the feasibility that was initially presented back in February, uh, that total project cost sat at just under seventeen point nine million. Um, at that time, we were able to look at the scope. We talked through some different options that we had to reduce the scope on this project. That brought the project estimated cost down to about fifteen point eight million. That's what was presented at the preliminary assessment hearing and incorporated in that um, presentation. And then we set today at that sixteen million. Looking at the project schedule, as I mentioned, back in February was the feasibility presentation. Uh, the public hearing for the preliminary assessment was April eighth. Final design took place over the summer and into this fall. Um, as I mentioned, agency and stakeholder reviews took place this fall. Plans and specifications are before you tonight. And then bidding will take place November and December. We plan to bring back the project for award in January. Um, the final assessment hearing would likely take place in the fall of twenty-five. And then construction would start basically first thing in the spring, March of twenty-five and continue all the way into June of twenty-six with project closeout in July. With that, I would be happy to take any questions. Uh, we are looking for a motion to approve the resolution to adopt plans and specifications and authorize advertisement to bid. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, what questions do we have?
Yeah, Hunter, you had mentioned about having the pond in Watab Park. Do you have more details on that? Um, just with the parties that are held there, the park, the splash pad. Um, just has a little bit concerned with that. Or if there's any other options besides that, or if we kind of are desperate for that.
Yeah, thi- this is definitely the, the natural area. Um, this is the best and most cost efficient area for the stormwater to go. Um, so we did talk through kind of, you know, like I said, that placement with the um, Parks Department. It would hold water constantly. So that's actually what the image on the left shows. It's approximately four feet of water in that, that normal water elevation. Um, there is, you know, pretty gradual sides coming down to it, but.
Chip?
Yeah, can you walk us through a little bit about the decisions on the widths of the road? Obviously, there's some feedback uh, from residents. I love that we're incorporating them into this plan, but obviously you chose thirty-two, thirty-four on some of these roads. Can you walk us through how that decision-making process went and any concerns that you might have currently?
Absolutely, yeah. So looking at, um, as I mentioned, the city standard is thirty-six feet. Um, we did have public input initially and many of them wanted the, the current widths to, to stay what they are. And as presented in the feasibility, there is uh, quite a range, especially a lot of them right now don't have curb and gutter. So it ranges anywhere from twenty to forty feet existing. Um, that thirty-six feet is, is a good standard to have. However, we have looked at reducing that in previous projects as well. So if you look at like the East Side project, um, that's where that thirty-two foot was most common in that East Side project and seemed to work very well with some of those local roads. Um, so that was kind of the um, the go-to for this project and that a lot of these roads, looking at like Fourth Street, um, Third Street, Fourth Avenue, Terry Lane, they just don't see much traffic. It's mainly just the people that live on those roads that are going through there and so that thirty-two foot was sufficient. Um, if you go any narrower, you start get running into parking restrictions and things like that. That's why um, for the most part, we tried to save that thirty-two foot minimum. Um, and then the thirty-four uh, was just based on traffic coming off that. So that, actually the mill and overlay on First Avenue there between Fourth and Fifth Street. Um, that one's a thirty-six foot, which is why you can see the south part of, this is red where that cul-de-sac is on First Avenue well, as well. That's thirty-six. So we didn't want to reduce that one all the way down to a thirty-two coming off the thirty-six, but didn't need the full thirty-six in that area.
Hunter, on that, can you talk us through Sartell Street a little bit? So we're bringing it to a thirty-six. Is that already a thirty-six section?
Yeah, you're talking on the east side there, that red?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so most of Sartell is narrowed out, but there are some businesses just on that very east end. And um, so we're connecting into the existing radius that was constructed with County Road One there. So it does widen out
Okay.
Um, right by those businesses, but then as soon as you get right close to that park, the proposal is to, to have it shrink up.
And twenty-four, is that the existing width of Sartell Street today?
Offhand, I wonder if I have that here.
Just thinking that today it doesn't have curb to my unders- my belief.
Right.
April?
Yeah, Mayor Fitzsim, um, there was a lot of discussion about the road width along Sartell. Um, in talking with a lot of the residents, they had a significant concern with losing some of their driveway space. Some of the right way gets extremely close to their homes, so they wanted to be able to preserve some of their driveway um, space. Sartell Street also gets used as a cut-through street and so some of it was to discourage some of that cut-through traffic uh, through this residential area. So where we uh, shrink it down to twenty-four feet, that is residential on both sides for that section. Um, and then just fitting, you know, a standard roadway width in there and uh, pedestrian traffic. And knowing that it drops off significantly down to Watab, um, the discussions we had around the street with the twenty-four foot is what rose to the top. That kind of met all of those criteria we were looking to, to meet.
Do we know if that is the existing width now? Are we shrinking it or?
Yeah, it ranges, I have it here. So it's, it's twenty-three to forty-four. So I mean, it's it's the forty-four usually is more towards the business side, but um, I'd say the majority of that road is in that like yeah, twenty-three to thirty-ish. But yeah, it's quite a range there without that curb and gutter. It, it varies.
Okay. I, I like the concept of uh, limiting it, it should deter traffic. My concern is if it doesn't and it is a highly utilized, uh, it's twenty-four feet and we've got traffic on both ways on it, might be a concern in the future. Today it's not, to my understanding, there's no curb there and so people can slide one way or the other. Um, I also think as we get into the winter months, we're not plowing straight curb to curb. We might have a twenty-foot street.
Mayor Fitzsim, with a twenty-four foot wide road, there would be parking restrictions um, on this roadway. So it's not, you wouldn't have parked cars there and trying to get two-way traffic. Um, again, balancing that with the comments we heard from residents and they'd rather be able to park in their driveway than on the road um, in this area. So that's something to factor in as well.
Uh, we talked about timing a little bit. That road in particular would be really important for Summer Fest. All of the floats go through that road. Um, and so anything we can do, that's the second week, second Saturday in June. Anything we can do for the construction side to uh, keep at least that and Fourth Avenue South open to allow Summer Fest to take place. And then the last one I had on that street in particular, I know in our early conversation, this goes back quite a ways, but we talked about doing that one as an alternate. Do we have any alternates included in this?
With the proposed project, there are currently not any alternates um, shown, so.
Um, we, we did talk about doing the trail and lighting alongside Sartell as an alternate. Um, we currently don't have Sartell Street as an alternate, but it is something that we could easily do.
My only consideration is uh, creating flexibility when the bids come in. Um, having flexibility if the bids came in higher than what is budgeted for, uh, rather than, than delaying the whole project, could we piece it out from there?
Uh, Mayor Fitzsim, a great idea cuz we wanna make sure um, we're maximizing the funds that are avail- available. Um, i- if you would allow our staff to have a little flexibility in identifying which areas would be the alternate. Sartell Street has some of the oldest infrastructure and so I would, would recommend that that portion of the project remain in the main project area, uh, just because of the age of those utilities.
Yeah, absolutely. I, um, to me, it's more about the budget side of it than which actual roads. So um, however, we have that flexibility, create that flexibility. And then, uh, one other item following up on Alex's as well. When I saw that pond in there, I, I first had the same reaction of there's a lot of events that take place there. It's a great open field today. Um, I think my bigger concern is just around the pond maintenance. If we look at nearly all of our ponds today, they uh, end up having trees surrounding them which are scrub trees in my opinion. And so I have concerns of someone renting space down there or utilizing the park and kids missing, not only are they missing, but they're likely missing near waterway with respect that the Watab River is also there. Um, but I would just, if we are going to put a pond there and there's no other location for it, um, how would we maintain it to create clear sightlines versus having that become an obstacle? how would we maintain it to create clear sightlines versus having that become an obstacle?
Yeah, Mayor Fitzsim, great question. We'll work with the public works staff to ensure that this one gets maintained and mowed on a more regular basis. A lot of times ponds are in an outlaw, kind of tucked away, hidden, and so those trees are allowed to grow up. But because this is in one of the park areas, it'll be a higher priority for more frequent mowing and, and maintenance so that those trees would not be able to, to mature and grow up.
Alex, if that does stay there as planned, does that satisfy some of your concerns?
I don't love it, I understand the need for it. I think if we can try to be creative with either minimizing size or just even signage or what we can do, obviously like Ryan said with the, the traffic in that park. And obviously with children being around, like Ryan said, we understand the, the river being there, but just adding another water source just makes me hesitate a little bit.
Yeah, great point. You know, it is something we look at, we do have wet ponds, stormwater ponds in other park areas, so it's something we take into consideration. The location and the shape of this pond, like Hunter said, is something that we talked with staff and the, the park department with. We originally had it placed kind of closer to the river, but we wanted people to be able to walk along the river, so we wanted to create that space. So it is something we have flexibility with a little bit, but we've, we've acquired some input already. And so barring any other feedback, I think this is the plan moving forward.
Mayor Fitzsim, I'll just jump in and add that we can definitely have a conversation with our, our Parks and Public Works team a little bit further in depth, something that came to mind for me, and I, I actually, as we were looking at this, I had text April. We might want to consider some fencing or just something that adds a little bit additional protection. You hear stories of kids wandering off into these ponds, and you've got a splash pad there that you're gonna have families playing on a playground. And if anybody has gone out there to take care of multiple kids at once, it's pretty easy to lose track of a kid out there because of all the amenities at the park. And so I think we can bring this feedback back to our team and just really make sure that we are honing in on both the care and the maintenance of it. But then, from my perspective, I, I'd be, as a parent, the safety aspect of it, of just having all the kids there. And I know the Watab is there, and we already have water on that site, so it probably seems ridiculous. But it just seems like an invitation for an accident to happen. And so we should definitely at least assess that and talk about it a little bit more in depth, just to make sure we're really dotting our i's and crossing our t's there.
Yeah, and I would encourage, if we're gonna fence it off, that to me feels more like, like a utility purpose, which obviously is what it is. But, I mean, I think there's a way that if it's there, we can have it actually beautify it a little bit versus fencing it off. If we're gonna fence it off, I would say, what can we do to move it to a less centered space? Within that same park if it needs to be, but, I don't know. As I reviewed the packet earlier, I, that stuck out to me as like, gosh, we've got a great open space and we're putting a park there, or a, a pond there. Let's at least make the pond visually appealing.
Mayor Fitzsim, Hannah, great input. And we, we kind of discourage fences around ponds because they can be trash collectors and everything else. So we try to manage that with different vegetation, and we can look at different options for that. You know, when talking with the Parks Department, it's a big open field space adjacent to here, some, some volleyball. It used to be a, like a kickball or softball field that's not utilized in that capacity anymore. So the thought was making it more of a beautification nature area and deterring attraction with different types of vegetation around it.
Yeah, I know there's a number of youth groups that host summer camps there. To what extent and, and how they utilize it, I'm not sure, but it's definitely a well-used park. I, I assume the intent is to allow the water to filtrate in before actually making it to the river, is that?
Because of the groundwater at this elevation, it's actually to settle the sediment out. That's what the purpose of a wet pond was, if we could filtrate it, it would be a dry pond, and then if we could, you know, make it even, look even better. The placement, we have some flexibility, but we are, there's a gas main that runs adjacent to here, and then we wanted to leave some space to the river. So just based on the parameters we had, we felt this was the, the best location. But we absolutely can look at what we can do to deter kids from being attracted to this area and change the shape a little bit to maybe get some larger green space if we can figure out a way to do that.
I, I know it's.
Go ahead.
I know if the, showing the grade, it looks bigger than it is, and it varies on how much rain we'd have. But what would, how big are we looking, roughly ten feet, twenty, fifty?
I don't even have my plan to scale in front of me.
I'm, I'm looking at the park shelter and the size of that.
That's what I was, probably two and a half of the park shelter or three of the park shelter?
It looks to be twenty to thirty feet by forty to fifty feet.
And is there any other engineering way to take the sediment out before getting to the river?
You know, you can, there are proprietary type of underground systems. It becomes difficult in this area because of the high groundwater. However, we looked at a system at a higher elevation up by Sartell Street. It's just that that roadway is abutted next to that steep slope, and so we didn't want to create any issues with putting a system on that slope. And so once you come down that hill, you go directly into a low area that's already adjacent to that parking lot. And we're utilizing that a little bit because that's already low and wet, and then putting it into this sediment basin before it gets to the river. So there are other engineering alternatives, we just felt that this was the best option with the high groundwater and the different, the significant change in grade from the roadway down to the, to the park.
Okay, well, I, I think council's expressed our hopes that there's gonna be some change or, you know, moving it west or whatnot. But that is, I think, all I had. Oh, one other item, again, going back to the last public hearing we had on this, there was a number of residents who spoke about sidewalks and not wanting sidewalks. Reviewing the material, it looks like we've taken a lot of sidewalks out from what our normal plans would be. Are there any others on here that are still contentious or that we're hearing feedback on?
Not to my knowledge, no, yeah, there, there were many residents that spoke on First Avenue North, and so that was something that we took into consideration after that and removed that sidewalk on First Avenue North. But actually, yeah, as you can see in red, the only proposed new sidewalks are along that school property. So that's, it's on the school side there. And then in, basically right where the parking lot is for Saint Francis on the north side of that parking lot. And that road's actually additional width right now, and so their parking lot, I mean, it's impacted with the project, but virtually stays the same size even though it's within the right of way there, so.
Great. Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, would look for a motion approving plans and advertising for bids.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second. April, or Hunter, question for you, we talked about some considerations. Are you able to take those, or do you need those as motions?
Mayor Fitzsim, if I recall correctly, it's looking at adding some alternates in to make sure we can stay within budget. And then maybe looking closer at the pond in, in Watab Park to see what we can do to beautify it and discourage,
Yeah.
Children from getting into.
Counsel's or consensus on those being the feedback?
Yeah, do you need me to amend the motion for those or not?
I'm here and not, so, okay. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have the city administrator and department incidental reports.
Mayor members of the council, you may recall with our change to policy governance that my incidental, incidental reports are sent every Friday. And so with our activation, and then also my vacation, you've only had one incidental report, it was last Friday. So if you have any questions on anything in that incidental report, let me know. One thing I will note is that I'm working on changing the formatting. I know it came over goofy, work in progress as I refine that system so that those automatically save in our records retention. So bear with me on that, but otherwise, if there's anything on the content, let me know if you have questions.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Finance monthly incidental report?
Yes, good evening, mayor members of council, you have my monthly updates in your packets, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for finance? Seeing none, thank you. Community development?
Good evening again, mayor members of the council, you have my updated monthly report formatted. One item to highlight is our year-to-date days to permit approval, which is well above our goal of under four. Currently, within the month that I polled, we are under that, but if you look at the overall year, we're almost double that. Some factors of that are large projects, which they're in our actual approval where our building official, building officials are looking at that for almost ninety days. So that's why some of those are higher. And we're also looking at modifying some of our applications. So the applicants are required to submit the required documents, and we're not having to reach out. So we have updated some of our applications already, so hopefully that number will start to come down. But with large projects, you'll probably see that number above our overall goal. But we are working on lowering that to get it within range. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for community development? Thank you. Council announcements. Alex?
Nothing today.
Jed?
Nothing today.
I've got two items, three items. September third video is not on the website. As I was reviewing the packets, I saw that. Twenty-third? And then the other one is election day, a week from tomorrow, and I believe we have early voting starting here at City Hall tomorrow. On all week, is that accurate?
Yep, starting tomorrow, Tuesday through Friday, normal business hours. We're also open on Saturday, I don't recall the hours at this point, but yes, at City Hall.
For more information, check our website, I presume.
Yes.
All right. Council, look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned.